We thank you for your grace to us and the gospel. And we are so fortunate for the area that we live in. We thank you for the blessing that it is to live in Marion County and in the United States of America. And this past week, weekend, Father, we do pause and still remember. And we thank you for the lives of those that have served our country faithfully, as we recognize Memorial Day this past week. And we thank you so much for all of our community leaders, especially those that are gathered here tonight on the board. And we just pray that all that is said and discussed tonight would bring honor and glory to you. And most of all, Lord, we thank you for your Son, Jesus, who came and lived a sinless life, who died on the cross and rose again from the dead three days later, and is coming again one day in all of his glory. And we pray all of this in the name of him, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Roll call, please. Mayor Carter.
Mr. Abbott.
Here.
Mr. Jackson.
I'm here.
Mr. Blansett.
Mr. Bryant.
Here.
Mr. Campbell.
Mr. Cantrell.
Here.
Mr. Franklin.
Here.
Mr. Hargis.
Here.
Mr. Hollings.
Mr. Mason.
Here.
Chairman Morrison.
Here.
Mr. Nunley.
Here.
Mr. Rollins.
Mr. Schaefer.
Here.
Mr. Thompson.
Here.
Agenda item number five, approval minutes of the previous meeting. Mr. Hargis with a motion. Mr. Mason with a second. All in favor? Oppose? Agenda item number six, approval of May agenda. Go.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, Mr. Thomas Morgan is present tonight. And as I understand it, and Mr. Morgan, former Mayor Jackson can feel free to correct me if I misstate this, but as I understand it, late Friday afternoon, Mr. Morgan sent a request to be on the agenda to speak in reference to item number fourteen, which is the our local agreement with the 12th Judicial District Drug Task Force. There was a question in the mayor's minds about whether it was too late to add something to the agenda. So I think the appropriate way to handle that would be you all to decide whether to amend the agenda to add that item and allow Mr. Morgan to speak prior to you all considering item number fourteen. If not, the other option available is to allow Mr. Morgan to speak under item number seven, public comments, which he has, he has signed the sign up sheet to be allowed to speak in that regard. So it's up to you all to make the decision whether you want to amend the agenda to add his, his item as an agenda item or have him speak under public comments. I'll make that motion. Wanting to amend the agenda to add that, Mr. Morgan?
Second.
About a motion from Mr. Brand, second, from Commissioner Schaefer. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? We will make that agenda item number, let's put it after sixteen, I think would be.
Well, sorry. He has to speak prior to.
Prior to that, so let's go like thirteen. We'll just call it thirteen A if you want to. That way it won't be this number. So thirteen A.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Agenda item number seven, public comments. Mr. Henry Lodge.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I am Henry Lodge, Chairman of the Marion County Library Board. Thank you for providing an opportunity to clarify some of the erroneous statements and allegations that were made in public and in the April commission meeting. The Marion County Library Board operates as a chartered not-for-profit organization and advised by Tennessee Code annotated chapter ten. There are nine trustees serving with representation, representation for each participating county and city. Approval of the trustees is coordinated with the county commission and with respective cities. I do not want to spend much time correcting the false rumors and accusations. Our staff and board follow all rules and regulations of the state of Tennessee as administered by the Tennessee Secretary of State and the Tennessee Public Library System. The last month's meeting, Commissioner stated that the library director was dismissed without proper authority. That is not true. The proper procedures were followed and the director was dismissed for cause. There was an insinuation that there were negative issues about the fiscal and managerial services provided by Marion County Library Board. We had clean audits by the state for the last five years or more. If you request, we'd be glad to get you copies of those audits. These audits should clarify any misunderstanding and misinformation shared in the last commission meeting. As for the management of the Marion County Library Board, much success has been achieved during the last five years. Each library has seen an increased participation from the public, management adjusted policies to account for outdated fiscal handling of monies, a coordinated system for accurate and timely payrolls. The policy and procedure manual has been put online for instant availability and updating as approved by the library board. These are just a few of the accomplishments of the library board and the library staff. The position of the executive director has proven to be helpful in providing consistent services with each library and for making sure that budgets were properly consistently managed and reported. The executive director is also available to cover staff, absences of staff in any library and in some cases to cover employees' need for lunch breaks. South Pittsburgh and Whitwell operate with extremely small staffs. One of the biggest advantages of the current system with the library board involved is that the executive director manages all spec, all aspects of the libraries following, following the board's policies and procedures. Separating the libraries would also require that both libraries have boards and accounting for payroll service and audit and annual audit preparation. This may surprise you, but, but there is no long waiting list for people willing to serve on the library board. In fact, the last three years, we have more often than not been short of having a full board. We hope to remedy that by working more closely with both the Whitwell, the city of Whitwell and the city of South Pittsburgh. The board respectfully requests that the commission allow the Marion County Library Board to continue managing the Whitwell and South Pittsburgh libraries with a full three quarters, two quarters, excuse me, of the current MOE. Our meetings are open, our financials are open. Come join us in a board meeting if you don't have enough to do on this board to better understand what we do. Thank you.
Mr. Lodge?
Yes.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
The library board's been around for fifty years, is that correct? Or longer?
You know, I have no idea. I suspect it's been more than fifty.
In that duration of times, have you ever had to fire a director of a library?
Yes, we have.
Which, when was that?
It was about five or six years ago.
She didn't get fired.
That was the firing. She retired.
Oh, she retired. Okay. She retired and blew out.
So no one has ever been fired, is that correct?
Well, I don't know. I don't have any idea about that.
Okay. Thank you, I appreciate it.
I haven't been involved in the library that long.
Thank you, sir.
Anything else?
No.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Nancy Perry.
My name is Nancy Perry. I'm here to announce the traveling yet now memorial wall is coming. It will be hosted by the Winchester Mayor and City Council, Disabled American Veterans, Chapter Seventy-One, VSW Post Forty-four, Combat Veterans Motorcycle Association, eighteen dash eleven, Congressman Scott DeJolay, Tennessee Senator Janice Bowling, and Tennessee Representative Irish Rutter. I'm giving you a heads up on this event to make plans to attend. It will come to Winchester on August thirteenth. There will be an escort from Montegoal through Swanee, Cowan, and to the Winchester City Park Pavilion located fifteen sixty-one Philip Fulmer Parkway across from the lake. The memorial will be open to all visitors, free of charge. If you are able to make a donation, it would be greatly appreciated. I'm coming to you now to get this information out to all our residents. We would like to see school outings to the memorial to be scheduled so the students can experience the monumental sacrifice our soldiers gave. We will have volunteers to assist in locating anyone on the memorial wall. If you have mobility issues, there will be golf carts to assist in transporting you. We will have guys and teachers to give an introduction to the purpose and a reason for the memorial. I'm asking all to take this opportunity to get the word out to businesses, churches, schools, and anyone else, VFWs or anything in this county. For me, I haven't been to the memorial in DC, so I'm especially thankful for this opportunity so close to us. I will be glad to answer any questions. Thank you for this opportunity. I know that there were some updates that I got. They are looking for volunteers. There will be needs on the thirteenth when it arrives to have people help set it up. It will open, it will have an opening ceremony at six PM. Then the real opening will be the next day, fourteenth, fifteenth, sixteenth, seventeenth, and eighteenth. And they need volunteers to do the golf carts, to aid in locating people on those, on the wall, and to give any other guide or anything else. So if you can drive a golf cart or speak to school kids, because we're looking for anybody that will help the teachers if they bring school buses, they want to schedule those school buses so they don't all arrive at the same time. There are some telephone numbers if, excuse me, if you need them in order to contact to make arrangements. And so in June or July, if I get any more information, I'll be glad to come back and give it to you. But I think our students here, other people that have not been out of this state, not been out of the southeast, have never gone to DC, need the opportunity to see this. It's a replica, but at least it's a good representation of what our soldiers gave. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Perry. Agenda item number eight, budget amendments, Marion County Local Government, Mr. Mayor. Question. Agenda item number nine, budget amendments, Marion County Board of Education, Dr. Griffin.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. The last meeting you all tabled, number one and number two. I don't know if, basically, on number one, it's additional premiums for the new Jasper Middle School. Number two, the IDA high cost kids and special education's free, free school equipment needs was in there. Number two is basically a reallocation from the federal government on Title One, Title Two, IDA Part B, IDA preschool. So basically, these are new allocations coming from the state that we, we gained monies in everything except Title One. Three A, I think probably most of you have that before you now. That's basically additional board legal expenses. That is CEO credit, removing coding, that is an accounting thing, and increase the health services, part-time RNs, increase regular education certified substitutes, state grant for summer learning camps, and increase of special ed for speech pathologists. Basically, all of these do not reflect anything on, they do not increase maintenance of effort for the county, and we're just asking passage of all of those.
Entertained motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Franklin, second by Commissioner Cantrell. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Dr. Griffin. Agenda item number ten, budget amendments, Marion County Highway Department.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. We got maybe eighteen thousand dollars from either our fund balance, if you look in the packet there. Got some going to assistance, some going to bookkeepers. That's just to complete the twenty-four, twenty-five fiscal year. Had to put five thousand in overtime just to the large volume, all the callouts, all the rain trees, all that, we can't forecast it, you know? And the amortization schedule was provided to us after we submitted the twenty-four, twenty-five fiscal year budget. So I put twelve seven, then principal notes, and then fifty-five dollars on interest on notes. And then when you go down, this is just moving around money on line item, we moved eight thousand, eight two seven over to, from equipment operators to truck drivers, just to finish that out for the year, so we can just make approval on doing those budget amendments.
Entertained motion to approve?
Second.
That'd be a motion from Commissioner Cantrell, second from Commissioner Schaefer. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose?
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm up next, just JADO. What we had happen was, we came to work one morning, the gas tank was leaking, we could smell fuel everywhere. Went out, got to look, and one of our fuel tanks, been on site for over thirty years, was pouring gas. We called JADO immediately, they came over, pumped the tank, and they offer a service where they can put a portable tank on site, like a thousand gallon tank. They're the only entity that we got that offers that kind of service, and we need fuel on site, you know? So they're going to create what we, what they pump out back to us. So I'm just looking for permission to continue using the tanks provided by JADO so we can have them in the highway department.
Entertained motion?
opposed.
Mr. Abbott, the motion, second by Commissioner Schaefer. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose?
One other question while I'm here.
Yes, sir.
I talked to the council out in the parking lot. I get probably ten, fifteen calls a month on the incline up there in Whitwell, the old mountain road where all the side by sides go, and everybody wants to use that road to go out, to go riding, you know? It's the time of year to go riding, and we maintain the road into the cul-de-sac there, but there's some posts there that was put there to block people from going on that road. I know, I'm not sure if I'm correct here, but a couple of years ago, that was voted on by the commission, fifteen, fifteen to zero votes to open that road. So we get called all the time to open it, and it's on our road or we don't maintain it, but, and I'm not sure if the posts are in the right of way of the county or not there. If so, do, do we remove them? Like, I'd need to take a grade all or something up there because the concrete is in, you know? But, but everybody up there knows, that calls me, knows that road was supposed to be open for use, so it's, it's still not moved.
By statute, if the, if the posts are an obstacle in the right of way that belongs to the highway department, they have an absolute right to remove those.
We do, right?
You do, yes, sir. If they are outside the right of way, you can't touch them.
Right, right.
You'll need to make, somebody will need to make a determination about whether they are within the right of way or outside of the right of way.
We, we can do that ourselves. Let's, let's just say they're not in the right of way. What happens then?
It's most likely going to be a third party question. I'm not sure if they're outside the right of way, it's probably they would be on, but I can, I can work with you, we can try to determine that based on where you find them to be with respect to the right of way. And then we'll just have to advise the, the question to you.
I'll ride up there tomorrow and check it. I'll give you a call or a text or something, let you know, yes or no, if they're in the right, if they're in the right of way, I'll just take the grade all up there and get them out.
Be glad to work with you on that.
I know it's closed at the bottom. I, I'm not thinking it's closed at the top. I don't really know, because, you know, we graded the road all the way down to Mr. Hooper's there and maintained it. So I don't think it's closed on top, but I know it's closed on the bottom. All right, I'll let you know tomorrow. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Perry. I guess we go to agenda item eleven, I will weigh with that. Agenda item number twelve, appoint Ricky Knoll to nine-one-one board to replace Joey Rollins, who has resigned.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Knoll, he's been a member of the South Pittsburgh Fire Department for thirty-plus years, and that's why Joey sort of represents the fire department, so I'd like to recommend he be replaced Joey on that, in that position.
I'll make a motion, go first.
Do you have a question, Mr. Brand?
I'd like to ask the mayor, what are the qualifications beyond nine-one-one?
There aren't, you have to be a resident of the county.
I've just got somebody I'd like to advocate for that's in our district, mayor. This fellow actually has an electronic diploma, in electronic, she's in electronics diploma and electronic communications, FEMA incident command course, IS, ICS one hundred through eight hundred, FEMA emergency manager, program manager, volunteer with the Marion County EMA. Thank you.
EMA since 2013. He's also a Tennessee Emergency Management Agency EMAT training that he's gone through, Tennessee State Certified Firefighter, FEMA Certified GPS Land Evacuation Search and Rescue, FEMA Certified Damage Assessment, DHS Graduate Weapons of Mass Destruction Training and D-Con Corps, Active License Amateur Radio Operator, THA Training for Hazardous Waste, Mass Casualty, Bio-Terrorism and D-Contamination, Certified Healthcare Safety Professional, Former Volunteer Gibson County TNEMA, Former Dispatcher Deputy Sheriff in Seminole County, Florida Sheriff Department, Former Volunteer Firefighter at Nokomis, Florida, the same thing in Gibson County Tennessee Rescue Squad, and he also currently works on building out new emergency operations centers at Ross and Bill, and I would hope you would consider him, because I know you have another slot on nine-one-one board. And it's Aaron Sanders.
I would like to talk to him. My architect and advisor, Ricky Knoll.
I have a motion forward from Commissioner Cantrell. I have a second from Commissioner Franklin. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Agenda item number thirteen, crude renewal, upgrade of ISAM system.
Yes, sir. It's an upgrade of the sheriff department's software. It's, it's four thousand dollars. Software's not to get out. Sheriff's got some money from a company, about fifty thousand dollars. Money's in the fudge, it's not going to cost tax, it's about four thousand dollars, and I'm great, Sheriff.
That's correct. So we got a good software system, I mean, I'm ready to make a deal, so this, this is, this system is in, you know, net base, so I actually got laptops and control cards so we can, we'll keep up with new technologies, so altogether, it's six thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars worth, so I have money, fifty thousand paid towards that, plus enough in my current budget to cover the other, if you would approve it.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Mason, second by Commissioner Franklin to approve. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose?
Second.
Mr. Chairman, can we go ahead and take care of fifteen?
Yes, sir. Absolutely.
My current bid is two thousand fifteen Chevrolet Equinox, I put about five thousand dollars into like three years. It's got the point, I want to keep going, good money and bad, so I found, I paid up Moss Motors, two thousand twenty-one Chevrolet Traxx, for seventy, seventeen thousand five hundred dollars, and also I have enough money in the budget to pay for that, if you would approve it.
Motion by Commissioner Cantrell, second by Commissioner Abbott. All in favor?
Before y'all vote, just to make, you know, where it is, the local cable, the price, that way you want to be that, if it's above that, we got to be that, that's flowing, if we can buy.
So we have the motion and the second round. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose?
Please, Mr. Chairman.
Please.
Let's go now to, let's go thirteen A, Thomas Morgan.
I was one of the few citizens that actually came to the Drug Task Force meeting, and after being there, things were deeply alarming to me. I'm here to raise serious concerns about the 12th Judicial Drug Task Force Agency that seizes property without conviction and operates no independent oversight, is functionally led by attorney, or the district attorney general, a judicial officer who commands a law enforcement officer, or a law enforcement officers, which is an executive branch. This violates separation of powers act. The DTF operates on civil asset forfeiture, that takes people's money without change, without charges, then fund their own operations with the proceeds. Officials, or officials here admitted on the record, if you seize, if your task is seized, you have to sue to get it back. That's not due process. That's, or state sanctioned piracy. This isn't theoretical. Detective Cody Smith, or last Drug Task Force Director Cody Smith was convicted of stealing, seized funds, distributing methamphetamine, and possession of a firearm, which is probably evidence tampering, really, from the information I've received on it. Yet no structural reforms really have been implemented. There's no civilian oversight, no transparency, no regular reporting to the commission, but yet they're asking you to be fiduciaries, which is responsible for that. To make matters worse, Marion County receives a one percent kickback from the Drug Task Force, Drug Task Force forfeiture funds. This means the more property is seized, the more revenue, revenue the county collects, creating a built-in conflict of interest. You're profiting from a system that routinely violates people's constitutional rights. Several current, several current and former law enforcement officers sit on this board with direct familiar ties or professional ties to the law enforcement, serve to influence this commission. Let me be very clear, you better accuse yourself from all drug task related, related decisions. It is inappropriate and likely unethical for the conflicted parties to vote that benefits the departments, agencies, and family members they're tied to. Today, I'm asking for five actions. Number one, audit the Drug Task Force finances and operations. Number two, suspend any of Marion County's participation in the Drug Task Force. Number three, prohibit the use of forfeiture funds without a criminal conviction. That was one thing that they did not make very clear in their presentation. There is criminal asset forfeiture and civil asset forfeiture. Civil asset forfeiture, you do not have to even be convicted of a crime. They have to say, we suspect that was involved in a crime or was related to the crime, and they can seize it from the citizen. Number four, create a policy requiring recusals from, in this board, from the commission. Fifth, implement a civilian oversight committee for the task force and the sheriff's office, since we do not have any internal affairs policies. Let me ask you this, as one of my final thoughts. If the definition, if the definition of insanity is doing the same thing over and over again, what exactly are we doing here? This task force model for the war on drugs, its funding structure has been the same way since nineteen eighty-six, nearly four decades, nearly four decades, that we haven't won anything. In fact, we even lost a local county commissioner and an officer in a helicopter crash here looking for drugs. in a helicopter crash here, looking for drugs. But the drugs are still everywhere. So, what is this plus, what does this system produce? Seized properties, broken families, budget bonuses, and political cover. Yet we sell it on the idea that it's public safety. It's a form of class warfare. You guys are openly attacking lower impoverished people that do not have the funds to fight them, either through civil asset forfeiture, administrative asset forfeiture, or the criminal system. That meeting had all the police officers talking about how it was a business. Never once did they talk about justice, due process, what we could do to restore the community, or even the cause of addiction, why people are doing drugs here. Is this, so I ask you directly, is the real goal to get the drugs off the streets, or to generate revenue? And enforce selective justice on the poor? Because right now it looks like the public safety strategy is more like a self-perpetuating system of class warfare, and the county is profiting from it. If the commission refuses to act and continues silencing residents who raise these issues, it will be seen as complicit in a constitutional failure. I submit a formal notice to the county right now, um, demanding these changes as a legal notice. I'm also submitting my public records requirement, request for David Jackson that I submitted earlier today, since he wanted to play games about me getting on the agenda today. I'm making it very public. So here Billy, here's your legal notice that these policies need to change. I would have gone into more detail, but they wanted to play games about how much time I could call it dead, so. Oh, yeah, and the way they operate is actually against Tennessee code, so they're operating illegal as it is. And I have the details on that in my hands.
Thank you, Mr. Morgan. Gen. 11, number fourteen, approval of Drug Task Force in a local agreement. Commissioner Brandt?
Mr. Gallagher. I'm in. I'm mad, are we operating legally?
Uh, in my opinion, yes. Uh, I, I understood what Mr. Morgan was saying. Don't, don't agree with a lot of his assertions. I wasn't at the workshop he was referring to, so I don't have the benefit of, I was getting, I have the benefit of being present for that. Uh, but I'll certainly take his, his notice under consideration, and if, if I review that, and I think there's some action that this body needs to take, I'll certainly recommend that and address that, and, of course. I, I did see his, uh, public records request that he submitted earlier, um, and the county will respond to that in due time.
So we'll entertain motions on the agreement, to sign the, the local agreement.
So is the agreement itself, are we operating illegally by?
It's, the, the same Drug Task Force agreement, in effect, all across the state of Tennessee. It's been, as Mr. Morgan alluded to, it's been, uh, some version of this has been in place now, um, for almost forty years. And, you know, the Drug Task Force is audited every year. It's actually audited twice. It's actually audited by the state, it's actually also by the grant agency, um, that, that funds a big portion of the Drug Task Force operation statewide.
So there's not any issue in us?
Would they agree?
Enter into agreement. Okay, I'm going to make a motion, enter into agreement.
What have been questioned?
Uh, you had mentioned, thank you Billy for clarifying the agreement. You had said at the prior meeting that there was problems with it, or that there was, that it wasn't, uh, needed to be updated, and that has not happened, as you said, that.
My, my issues with it, Mr. Brandt, were, um, and I think I might have stated a little bit about this in the last meeting, um, it had not been updated to reflect the change engendered from our previous, uh, District Attorney to, to, um, Colonel Lynch. And I just did discuss that with her, uh, and she emphatically stated she was okay with the way it was written. She was not asking that it be rewritten to make it either gender neutral or to reflect that she's a female. She was okay with that. There was one other, um, minor, uh, not believed in consequential component to it that was somewhat related to that. She was okay with that as well.
Can you remember what that was?
Uh, I don't recall. I think it had, had reference specifically to General Taylor, who was our previous, uh, District Attorney, uh, instead of to her personally. You know, if she's okay with that verbiage being left in there, then I feel like I'll face the question, actually, it's referred to her, not, not to anyone else. If she's comfortable with it, then I don't have an issue with it.
Have a motion on the floor.
I'll second her motion.
Mr. Mason, I have a second from Commissioner Cantrell. All in favor?
No.
Opposed?
Get it, or no?
No.
Let's, let's do a roll call, please. Uh, yes will be to approve.
Mr. Abbott?
Yes.
Mr. Atkins?
Yes.
Mr. Brandt?
No.
Mr. Cantrell?
Yes.
Mr. Franklin?
Yes.
Mr. Hargis?
Yes.
Mr. Mason?
Yes.
Chairman Morrison?
Yes.
Mr. Nunley?
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer?
No.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
None to, both passes?
None to.
Uh, gen. 15, I'm already taking care of that, the sheriff. Make sure I'm not skipping anything there. Uh, sixteen, Library Board, Commissioner Paul Schaefer.
Uh, Chairman, can I ask something?
You can give it.
I just want to declare something, uh, with Chairman Lodge, uh, referencing the clean audit. I think we've received, I want to say it was, uh, about eight or nine months ago, that we received, uh, there was deficiencies on the audit, that there was, they overspent their budget, and also spent money without board approval. So I just want to make that clear that, that there was, uh, was not a clean audit.
Mr. Schaefer?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, I attended the last Library Board meeting, and, uh, where the Jasper Library pulled out of the County Board, Library Board, and became independent under the City of Jasper. The Library Board tran- transferred all the assets from the County Library Board to the City of Jasper, in the amount of four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Money that was allocated for the library in Jasper, a little over eighteen thousand dollars, if my memory serves me correct, was not transferred to Jasper, but put into savings account for the Marion County Library Board. I have some concerns about that, and I'd like to make the following resolution. Be it resolved that the Marion County Commission fund the Jasper, South Pittsburgh, and Whit- Whit libraries at the same rate of funding. Monies for Mount Eagle at the current rate of funding. All funding to be funded through the local cities by adding the county funds to the city's local funding for each library. No monies are to be distributed through the County Library Board.
Mr. Chairman, I think we discussed this in workshop before the office. Cities were actually open to receiving those funds, whether or not they wanted to be a part of that. I think it's only right that we checked with the cities, funded as equal as you stated in your, that part of resolution, but I, I don't think we should just automatically impose on the cities in that without, you know, having some kind of contact with the cities first.
I had asked the attorney to write up a resolution, uh, which I did not get, this resolution that I wrote up.
Okay.
No second to that motion.
And, uh.
So, so the res-
I'm sure that the City of Jasper be willing to take the funds. I talked to the mayor, and I think that he is.
I, I'm sure the City of Jasper will, yes, sir.
So, but as it is now, all funds go through the Library Board, and I want to make sure that all funds go directly to the cities that headed it so dead. The Library Board cannot transfer funds from one city to another city.
But you want to go ahead and move forward with this now?
Yes, sir, and I'd like a roll call vote.
I've got a commit, uh.
I would agree with Chairman Morrison on that. I, I believe we need to speak with the, the city mayors to determine if they can, if they can.
Is it not too late? Like, can we table it and, and maybe hear from?
Well, if we table it, we are coming up with a new budget.
Right.
Where we have the time for the next, for the budget meeting.
Well, I think the money appropriation is, is fine. I think.
But it's earmarked to go to the Library Board.
Sure, right, but no one's going to lose funding.
Well, the Library Board just took seventeen thousand dollars from Jasper, put it in a savings account. So they could arbitrarily move money around without our saving, even though we say it's specifically supposed to go to each library.
Okay, so let's go ahead with your motion as is.
Thank you.
And that was second by Commissioner Brandt.
Roll call vote.
You've asked for a roll call vote.
Okay, I need some clarification on what exactly is he, are you saying that the, that we are going to split three ways, each city, and then money will get their allotted amount, which I believe is, what is it, seventy-five hundred dollars?
Right. The question is that he doesn't want to pay the Library Board. Jasper will automatically go to Jasper's, because they're not part of the Library Board. The other two are still part of the Library Board.
But we don't know if the cities will.
We don't, we haven't spoken with the cities.
What requirements do the cities have to have? I know that Jasper, they, they should get their, their allotted amount, but.
The cities already allot monies for the libraries, and all we're doing is putting our monies in with the cities' money.
With their monies for MOS. Okay, I'm, I'm, I'm picking up Lee's land now. Okay.
Counselor, we have an issue of employment, employees that we discussed the other night.
Well, we talked briefly at the, at the workshop last week. You do have, as I understand it, two librarians, one for South Pittsburgh, one for Whitwell, who are currently employees of the County Library Board, and not, not employees of the towns, the cities. And, um, so that would have to be accommodated in some fashion, uh, by, by the cities, uh, especially since the County Library Board would no longer have to pay those employees. So, uh, I'm not sure, doing the appropriation in this fashion, how, how that would be resolved. And to some extent, it would be up to each individual city to make that determination.
So we're going to be putting two, well, they've already fired one, uh, so possibly the Whitwell librarian.
Pay through the Library Board. That's why I was going to talk to the cities. Cities may not want to take on an employee. On that, I'm just saying, I think we'll put the cart before the horse, but that's okay. We've got a motion, let's, let's.
Well, I'm, I'm listening, but before I, I, I need to know.
Well, there's one other thing that, that we also touched on in the workshop, for those who, who weren't there, especially, each city, if, if they're gonna, if they're going to, to go their own route, the way Jasper has done, they're gonna have to have their own library organization, a board of some kind, that will work to oversee their library operations. And I can't speak for those cities, but I'm not aware that either of them have that in place at this time. So, a- and, and I understand, Mr. Schaefer, your, your funding in this fashion wouldn't start until, I assume, until next fiscal year, since we're on one, uh, that would then, you know, require those cities to, to get those, uh, boards in place and make the determination about whether to bring the librarian on as a, as a city or, or town employee, so forth. And, and I'm not aware that there's been any communication with these other, other two cities. There may have been, there may have been, I'm just not aware of it, so. But there are some procedural things that would have to be undertaken by each of those cities in order to make this work the way it's, it's been presented tonight.
We can split that funding three ways without any issues whatsoever.
Well, you still have to, let, let's.
Speaking point would be going directly to the cities.
Right. You still, you still have to, you still have to address your maintenance of effort agreement.
Yes.
And those don't renew until October.
Right.
So, and there needs to be some advanced planning with Secretary of State on, on what you're proposing to do here. I don't want you to get in a situation where you have to fund it. In other words, if you put it in this budget, you would have to go back to last year's amount, plus the amount that the City of Jasper is requesting. Well, unless you. Basically. Yeah, right now.
Well, you, I don't think that's correct. I think the maintenance of effort is a lump sum, and you can split that three ways. If I'm, if I'm understanding correctly, that you would allot, like, you've got Jasper, Whitwell, and South Pittsburgh. You, and you split it basically three ways, and then you send one-third of it to Jasper, and two-thirds to the Library Board currently. You know, because they're currently overseeing those two libraries. It's not an addition, like, if you, it's not like you do your maintenance of effort and then plus Jasper. The maintenance of effort is the maintenance of effort. You just have to rewrite it.
That's right. I, that's what I'm saying. You, you're gonna have to redo your maintenance of effort agreement with the state.
But the money is still the same.
Because if that's what you all vote to do, then you will have one maintenance of effort agreement that will specify the amount of funds that are going to the Jasper library system.
But we can't do that till October?
And then, well, that's when, that's when your current maintenance of effort agreement expires.
Well, that just doesn't make any sense at all.
It's not tied, it's not tied, well, the state's on a little different fiscal year than we're on.
Well. So how does that work? How would that work?
Well, I, I think, I think what, what should happen is, there should be some procedural negotiations with the state now, on, on what you all, as a body, decide you're going to do with, with funding on these libraries.
And who is responsible for doing that?
Well, it, it would fall on the, the mayor, the chief financial officer of the county, but it would be following whatever directions are given by the commission.
So I want to make a motion. Well, we've got, figure out his first.
I've got a question I asked you before, when we were at the workshop. It's, you said that, I guess according to the state, the library services have to be at the same level. Does that mean Jasper's has to be at the same level?
Well, the, the county's expenditure of funds for library services has to be at the same monetary level.
Okay.
But we fund Mount Eagle at a different level than we do the other three libraries. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
So they're not being funded equally?
Well, there's a, they're, they service more Grundy County than they do Marion County. That's the reason for that amount.
I just wanted to draw my point.
Okay. I'm, I'm with you.
Is that funded or a donation?
It's MOE, but.
It is, okay.
We sign MOE, then it's like all the rest.
Okay.
Mr. Brandt's excuse is self, restroom, so. You know, my, you know, that's, the only issue I have with that is, is not, uh, not completely, the, the split of the third is, that, that's totally separate to me. I just don't think we should impose that on the cities.
But the Library Board, so Jasper funding away from them and put it into a savings account, what it's going to be used for, I don't know. But they're taking monies away from the library, or yet servicing our children that they can't buy equipment for the children to use, and senior citizens, anybody else that uses the library. And Jasper is one of our most-used libraries by the citizens of Marion County.
Okay, so.
Mr. Gallagher, real, real quick, sir. Uh, Mr. Gallagher, is, is, are you allowed to have a savings account like that? Uh, Mr. Gallagher, is, is, are you allowed to have a savings account like that, or is there an amount of money that has to be spent?
I'm sure.
Or can you legally, like, what they're doing, have this savings account that was for, uh, not a stipend, but an additional amount of, like, a percentage extra pay that was to go to the, the employees? Can you take that money and put it in a bank account as a savings account, or do you have to spend it?
Well, the, the county library board, and again, I'm not certain of the origin of those monies. I don't know if it was, if it, if it was a remaining portion of the original appropriation made by this body to the county library board. I think I heard, and I might not be, I'm gonna just quote Ms. Gray when she was speaking at the workshop the other night, but, but someone had said, um, that those funds were, um, fines and, and other fees and things that were generated by the library operation itself.
Okay.
So I'm not certain which, which those, it may be a combination of those things, that, that I'm not sure of. But generally, the county library board can manage its funds as long as it does so within legal boundaries, higher risk these fit, and as long as those funds are spent for county, county library purposes. Whether they're a portion distributed to Jasper, Whitwell, or South Pittsburgh, again, is up, up to the county library board. And, and I, I can't speak for them, so I don't, I'm not sure, you know, what the thought process was in, in retaining those funds.
Well, if I gave a donation in, um, District One in South Pittsburgh to the local library, would that money, could that money end up?
Um, if you give the money to the county library board?
No, I, if I gave it to the, the library in South Pittsburgh, now they have to do something with that money, and I would assume that they have to hand it over to the library board. Could that theoretically, that money get distributed elsewhere?
It, no, not, well, I'm not saying it could be, but it shouldn't, it shouldn't be. If you earmark those funds for expenditure at the South Pittsburgh library, then no, it shouldn't, it shouldn't be spent elsewhere. And the same thing, you know, and a, and a couple of other commissioners, I've asked me this question too, if, if you all do something similar to the motion that's on the, on the floor now, and that's ultimately what you decide to do, and you apportion, after you take out Montegoat's contribution, you apportion that remaining balance, one-third to each city library, Whitwell, South Pittsburgh, and Jasper, then, uh, you earmark those funds for that particular library, and the cities themselves should not legally be allowed to spend those funds on anything other than library services. It would be restricted funds.
I'm sorry, that-
No, sir.
Look, Chairman, I, I've got a question. I'm sorry, the, the city of South Pittsburgh has not, um, stated whether they would, uh, want to take over this or not, and the, and the city of Whitwell has not either.
To my understanding, that's correct.
So when is South Pittsburgh and Whitwell's next city meetings? And do they know this is something that we would request that they review and?
Commissioner Brown, can you tell us the date of the next city meeting? The third? Third Thursday?
Yeah.
Right, third Thursday. I don't know where that falls, I guess we're past that.
So, so our next commission meeting will be after their meeting?
It should be, I mean, you've got a whole month.
South Pittsburgh's next regular meeting will be June the 10th. Yeah, South Pittsburgh's board is aware of this si- yeah, situation. They are aware.
Right, so we really, we really have two questions here, in my opinion. The M O E, we know we're gonna have to vote on for the budget, uh, for next fiscal year by, and we know that third, 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 and Montegoat's share. I guess, Commissioner Schaefer, I'm not, I wanna make sure, whatever balance is out there in the library board's, um, balance sheet, um, if this takes place in South Pittsburgh and Whitwell, of course Jasper's already, uh, accepted taking over, um, then, do those funds become a third of each of those libraries, the balance is left from this year's funding?
Well, assuming there is a balance left, um, then at this point, those funds are under control of the county's library, funds they already have in their possession.
Yeah, but, but their directive is, is they've got to spend those funds on the three libraries per-.
Two libraries.
Well, now, yeah. So, are we worried that they're gonna spend some of those funds or left in their balance, um, on the other two libraries and not give Jasper their funding for this year?
That's my concern about that, or is it your concern?
That's what my concern is, because the funds, according to the lady that spoke at the workshop, were funds that were from fines at the Jasper library, not at Whitwell or South Pittsburgh. So those funds should stay with the Jasper library, but instead they didn't give it to Jasper. They put it into a savings account, for what I don't know, but those funds should have gone to Jasper along with all the assets, in my opinion.
So, so do we know what the balance in the library board fund is now?
Mr. Lodge is here.
Chairman Lodge is here.
I do, that's what we're asking.
Well, if, if, whether that's to be answered or not, the, the real key is, is that, um, our budget process is set a third, a third, a third, okay? State of Tennessee audits the library board. If there's more funding going to one library than the other, and we know that there's an amount that's not funded back like it was supposed to be, then we can allocate that change at our budget meeting coming on to make that up.
I'll see why not.
So, it, so, it, if, if that takes place, and then we, we have our audit for end of the year's library board, if we send funding going elsewhere, then that funding, uh, needs to be pulled back in to the appropriate library, so the equal amount is left.
Could I say, and, uh-
Yes.
I'm, I'm on the library board, and I've been on it almost six years. Uh-
Ma'am, can you state your name, please?
June Grimes.
Thank you.
Uh, previously, if I understood Mr. Gallagher correctly, um, at the time, there was a separation from Jasper out of the Marion County Library Board, the M O E was made with the Marion County Library Board. Also, and that pretty much was this year, twenty-four, twenty-five. Now, what you, well, I think are talking about for twenty-five, twenty-six-
A little both.
As well as this eight, sixteen, eighteen thousand dollars that Mr. Rurix or Mr. Schaefer's talking about, that money is when Jasper Library was in the financial control of the Marion County Library. Every dime would been administered by the Marion County Library. Well, at the time Jasper chose to move out, that monies belonged to Marion County Library, not to Jasper. They had originally been part of Marion County Library, but they chose to pull out.
Okay, can I say something? Okay, so, it is, does not belong to the Marion County Library Board. It belongs to our libraries. It has nothing to do with a board at all. You have Whitwell Library, you have South Pittsburgh Library, and you have Jasper Library.
That M O E is made with-
I'm speaking, please. I, no, please don't interrupt. I know. The monies that you're talking about was earned by the Jasper Library. They may have been governed by the board, but those monies, that's the, that would be like somebody coming up and snatching Whitwell's money or South Pittsburgh's money. You know, you're talking about money that this commission gave to the, the Marion County Library Board for Jasper, but have you even given the rest of that allocated monies to Jasper?
That M O E was made to the Marion County Library.
For Jasper.
The M O E was given to-
For Jasper.
We are a nonprofit organization, and we have the authority-
Which means you should zero out at the end of the year if you're a nonprofit.
So-
We should.
Do we have information to the speaker? And Ms. Grimes, thank you. I totally understand that it was, uh-
I had a question, Ms. Grimes, so quick.
Yes, I'm sorry.
Ms. Grimes?
Yes.
I, I know you had made mention that we had not heard your side of the story, but the commissioners from District One was in conversation with the Chairman, Chairman Lodge, so we were aware of what was going on. Commissioner Blansett was talking with him, so I didn't want you to think that this was done haphazardly and was done without us having knowledge of what was going on. We thoroughly understood what was going on. So, thank you, ma'am.
Uh, Mr. Gallagher, do you, can you speak to one thing for just the crowd in general?
I can.
If the M O E was made with a nonprofit and the money came to the nonprofit to make that decision, we had a library ci- city wanting to pull a library out, to, unknown to us. We learned about it in September. We didn't know what to do with that. Numerous people, I understand our regional folks with the Secretary of State spoke to them and asked them, give it a few weeks, give it a few, you know, to make this at the end of fiscal year. They chose not to do that. I understand some of the folks on the, on this board had said, hold off, you know, give it a year, do some planning, and it did not happen. So, we did not fail, and as it turns out, we, you know, that we had the, the authority to spend that money as we saw fit to the libraries we were in charge of. Is that pretty much correct?
That's quite different. Um, and, and I think, and I don't, I, I don't, Mayor Turner Shear, I certainly don't wanna step on his toes and, and speak for him or the county of Jasper, but, but I know they're, they had a plan when they withdrew from the county library organization to form their own board and, and go their own direction.
That's fine.
And, and I think they anticipated that there might be some funding shortfalls, uh, for at least this, this fiscal year, and, and they were required to have a plan with the Secretary of State that, that addressed whatever those funding shortfalls might be. So, I, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna comment on that, because that's their business, but, but I do know that they did have a plan and that the Secretary of State expected them to have a plan before that allowed them to, to go their own, their own way.
Irrespective of the fact that the, the collection that is housed in the Jasper Library, you're gonna work with us on trying to give our possession an asset to that library.
Correct.
Because it's important to us, as, as library people in care, to keep the services going. But those assets belong currently to the Marion County Library. We've just gotta figure out how to do it so that, uh, our, uh, auditors don't give us some trouble, because they will. They're gonna say, where's that four hundred thousand asset?
It's not four hundred thousand.
What is it?
It's, we, we can give you a breakdown. Uh, we're getting broke to the mud here.
Well, yeah, it's not, you know, anyway, it's fairly fat.
I can clarify a lot, okay.
Yeah, we could bear.
And that's what, that's what Mr. Schaefer, I think, was speaking to at the beginning of his, of his motion about the assets of the library, other than that, that cash that was in the bank account being transferred. And Grimes is correct, I, I spoke, I think, to Mr. Lodge and also with Ann Gray last week after the workshop about a, a process that needs to be undertaken to, to effectively make that transfer so that there's a record of that for all the purposes and, and bookkeeping purposes we're full. So, the main, main thing we need is a description of, as best we can, of what's being transferred, so.
Mayor, Mayor Turner, uh, since Ms. Grimes spoke on behalf of the library board, if you wanna speak on the other behalf, and then we'll stop it right there.
Yeah, I'll keep it short.
Go ahead, sir.
This, this, this broke down into two different accounts. Each library had their own account. I mean, Pearson's library had an account, Carolyn Stewart's account, and Whitwell's where, oh, oh, anyway, they had an account. And then you've got the maintenance of effort. So we do, we went and go get the maintenance of effort, so we, sixty thousand, sixty thousand, I think, is what we lost out on because we pulled out. The seventeen thousand, eight oh one, seventeen thousand something, so whatever, yeah, seventeen thousand some change. That was an account that was started five years before the Marion County Library was even formed. So, it was a Jasper account. Carolyn Stewart's account, when it is listed at Whitwell Bank, it's Carolyn Stewart's, that's the library, and two different names. So, what happened with, with that money? That's money that people come in and, and donate, that is copies that are on city provided copy machines and printers and things like that. Uh, those, those are the levels, and some of it is late fees. The majority of it was donations from nineteen seventy-two, when that account was started. So it took them from nineteen seventy-two to get to the seventeen thousand dollar round. So, so that money right there, when we pulled, the night we pulled out, Mr. Lodge and, uh, Ms. uh, Prentice, uh, went to the Whitwell branch and sucked that money out two minutes after the branch opened. So that seventeen thousand dollars, yeah, you know, wasn't there when you're not, it was five years before, but that's, that's not here to argue. So we, we fund, we lost on seventy-seven thousand, eight oh one, some change this year. The city stepped up and funded that difference, because that's what we're gonna do, that's the right thing to do, to make sure the library operates. We're just asking for the equal one third share, all we're asking for.
Thank you for clearing that part up. Thank you.
Yeah, I, I don't think, I don't think anybody's against the one-third. Yeah, that's all right now. Or maybe, I don't think anybody's against the one-third, the one-third. The question is, the cities, uh, South Pittsburgh and the city of Whitwell need to be on board. Absolutely. We would say, yes, we'll take this responsibility, we'll create our board, or we will unstable Marion County Library, whatever. I would like to give those, the, the two cities their opportunity, uh, my statement.
If cities want to skip it, the library work adds some money.
Correct.
Yeah, let's not force them not to.
I, I, if this resolution does not say, I'm just saying that.
But you're, you're saying, correct me, you're saying that you're going to take the funds away from the library board and give them to the cities?
You're right.
So-
So that way they get their fair share.
The library board employs people, so.
Yes, yes.
That's the catch.
Yes, and the cities, we don't know if the cities wanna do that. So, once again, I think the third is, is not an issue. It's the things that's in the proposed resolution that has to do with cities, okay? But, you know, we've got a motion, and we've got a second, if you wanna stick with that motion. But you did combine the two together. You combined the third and give it to the cities together.
Correct.
Okay.
Mr. Lodge, I just wanna clarify one thing, uh, and with all due respect to the mayor of Jasper, there's some confusion. There was a building fund-
That's different, that's all different, you know, separate.
In the Jasper Library, that we transferred, the, the board transferred a year or so ago, that had been over a long period of years, it was for a building fund or something, and the library board transferred that to the city of Jasper.
Separate account.
And the, the money, the money that was in the library board's account, excuse me.
Separate account.
Please don't, please don't word it out. Go, Mr. Lodge.
Uh, the money that was in the library board's account, when they pulled out, was library board money. Now, there may have been commingled funds, but it was the bulk of it, and we don't know how much exactly, but the bulk of it was, um, board, library board money. And, and we are now, as you mentioned, trying to get the documentation. We don't have a lot of history on, but we are in the process of trying to get them, all that is in their library that is currently the library board's property, trying to get all that in their name so that it is Jasper's. We don't need it, they need it. Sounds like a plan.
Thank you, Mr. Lodge.
I approve.
He's got a motion on second on the floor. We, we can debate and discuss this all night.
So, so we have a, a motion on the floor to, third, the M O E, and to defund the library board and pay the M O E directly to the city of South Pittsburgh and the city of Whitwell.
To their, to their library's fund.
In Jasper, yeah.
Can we do that legal way?
Can we do that legally if the city and South Pittsburgh, Whitwell doesn't go without it?
I don't think so, but let's move on with this vote. I don't, I don't think so. Who's called?
Mr. Abbott.
No, but not the cities except for the law.
Mr. Atkins.
No, until we hear from the cities.
Mr. Brandt.
Yes.
Mr. Cantrell.
No.
Mr. Franklin.
No, not till we hear from the cities.
Mr. Hargis.
No, I am just.
Mr. Mason.
No.
Chairman Morrison.
No.
Mr. Nunley.
Yes.
Mr. Mr. Shaker.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
No, not yet.
I'd like to make a different motion.
You, you good, Jim?
I wanna make a motion that we third the M O E between Jasper, Whitwell, and South Pittsburgh.
Jasper.
M O E.
Jasper Library Board.
And the library board, so, yes. The one-third goes to Jasper, two-thirds go to the library board. For Whitwell and South Pittsburgh.
A second, please.
Motion, Bob, Commissioner.
I, sir. I don't understand, real quick, I'm sorry, I, can you clarify, that M O E, was it not, uh, as I recall, were they not hiring an executive director, was that not what the intent of the M O E was for?
No. There's a maintenance of effort that funds the libraries.
Okay, Mr. Chairman.
The three hundred and one thousand dollars was funded the Marion County Library Board last year, and it's the same big fund in this place. You cannot divide it in thirds, thirds, thirds.
Yes, you can.
Let me finish, Commissioner.
Can.
Reason being, it was fifty thousand that was put in there two years ago to hire an executive director. Jasper's cut sixty-seven thousand dollars. And I think Whitwell's is, I don't have it numbered up, I have it probably right there. And then the seventy-five hundred dollars, Montague's awesome at three hundred and one. So, so it's not a third, third, third.
So, do I need to amend that Jasper gets the sixty-seven?
Yeah, I mean, it can be done, it can be done now, it can be done June once it's done.
I wanna do it now so I know it gets done.
But it's not gonna be checked, it'll be read in July.
Well, I don't care when the check's read, and I just wanna make sure it is taken care of and the ball's not kicked down the street until it's too late to do anything.
So, we'll specify that dollar amount in the motion.
Well, the, the three oh one is a fixed amount, but that's the minimum.
So, do I need to amend my motion to say that Jasper gets the sixty-seven thousand and the library board, board gets the rest to do whatever they do with it?
So, Commissioner Mason has a question.
Sure, go ahead.
I'm trying to understand this motion, we're voting on something for the budget for this year.
Next year. Next year.
Well, look, our, what if.
Which is a lumped away.
South Pittsburgh join in, then, then we've got to change that motion again. We've got to back out Montague's amount of that three oh one, of course, um, so, so.
I mean, there's a break, there's a breakdown, I know, but it gets.
I totally understand what you're saying, I believe a third, a third, a third, a quarter, but if, if South Pittsburgh wants to join in and, and city Whitwell wants to join in, then what we have to make a vote come in June's meeting before our actual budget is passed for next year.
Cities vote to go back.
You see what I'm saying, it gives, it gives opportunity for South Pittsburgh, Whitwell, it's a, I want in or I don't want in.
I just don't want it us to get to June and it be something like, well, another excuse.
Well, the, the, the key is that, um. Chairman? Um, when will we vote on our budget?
At June thirtieth.
Yeah, last, last day of the, June. So, so we'll know if those are in, if cities of this order are out, and, 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 and that's our vote for our budget anyways, so, I, I'm just throwing that out there, I know you've got a motion.
But it's our M O E, our M O E period, you have to do that every year. So, where it goes, do you have to wait until June to say, okay, will we just not put that to, this library business to bed?
Well, I love it, but I'm saying personally, but I.
Well, I'm not.
Mr. Chairman.
That doesn't change regardless of us deciding to not, we make the budget.
One, one thing that I, I want you to lose sight of is, with, with all due respect, well, with all due respect to the county library board, if either of the other two cities decide to pull out of the county library board and form their own like Jasper is doing, then you have that fifty thousand dollar amount for an executive director out there that, that you may not need to spend for an executive director.
Correct.
Um, so if that becomes a reality, then you have an additional fifty thousand dollars that you can appropriate to, to the cities.
Okay, okay.
Don't hurry it up, slow down.
So, so until you know what these other cities plan to do, and I somewhat agree with Commissioner Abbott, that, that anything you do tonight is gonna be premature.
May have to be redone.
Right, because you, you may wind up with an additional sum of money that has to be allocated. You may not, it's, again, it's gonna depend almost entirely on what South Pittsburgh, Whitwell decide, it's in their business. And they're gonna have to decide something pretty quickly where, where they're gonna, I won't say they're gonna be left out, but they're gonna, they're gonna be at the mercy of, of everybody else.
So, I withdraw my motion until, can I have this put on the agenda for?
Absolutely.
I would like to do that, please.
I would like. The city of Whitwell and South Pittsburgh to be contacted to see if they are willing to take over their libraries.
That will be discussed in their June city meetings.
I wanna make sure that if, you know, if I have to go to their meetings, I'll be glad to go to their meetings if I know the dates when they're gonna meet. Make sure that's on their, their agendas.
Okay. General item number seventeen, approval of notice.
Vanessa Tabe Levens, John Crabtree, Connor Flint, Jeffrey M. Flint, Lena, Ginsal, Vicky L. Johnson, Louis O'Chin, and Nancy Arby.
Motion to approve. Mr. Shaker, second. Uh, Mr. Thompson, all in favor, opposed, general business.
Uh, I asked the mayor for an update for the, uh, South Pittsburgh Mountain Water Project. There was another question that came, mayor, I know you've, you've said this before, then, um, the decisions that were made about where the water was going was made, I think what you told us was made by, uh, Mr. Keith Gordon and by, uh, Mayor Jasper.
For engineers, I would have to go down.
Okay. So, right now you, you mentioned at the last meeting something about, uh, there was fire hazards, could you explain that whole thing I didn't understand the last time?
T D A will not approve the fire hazard field system because it does not provide, provide fireplace. But, once they're put in, you want to, once we can go back to the high end and just do it in stations.
Okay, um, I do have, uh, I got an email from a fellow from T dot, by the name of Andrew C. Miller, he's the utilities manager division. And I asked him, you know, what was the, what was the problem, and I'll just read verbatim what he said to me. He said, Commissioner Brandt, thank you for your phone call this morning, answer your question, yes, T dot has rescinded the South Pittsburgh Mountain Water permit until the issue on Battle Creek Road is resolved. We have met with utilities, geotechnical studies, to determine the best solution to fix the failing roadway slope. I believe we are making progress in getting the slope fixed and will revisit other permits for the area once the current situation is resolved. My question, my question to you is, what do you need from us?
I have a meeting with the T dot commissioner June sixteenth, which has been.
Okay.
Officially.
All right, thank you.
Uh, Malins, come, where are we on that?
We're getting close, I wonder where Mayor Turner went, but I have, uh, I have the, the check that you all approved last month to go for half of the SCAD system and communicated that with, for the Jasper City Attorney, spoke reasons with Mayor Turner about it before the meeting, so, close to getting that finished.
Okay, and I know I spoke to you, uh, Millie, about the Egypt Hollow, that water mine, and I wanted everybody to know that there is another avenue being looked at to try and take care of that. It's not a yes, but it's something to look at at least, so, that's in the, that I know of on that.
Just waiting on an answer back from the, the county's auditor or coprover about the question I have about depreciation.
Correct.
Something that, that I have thought about and I wanted some opinion from them on the board, put anything on the board about that.
Chairman, I.
Commissioner Brandt.
I just wanna make sure that I was clear, um, is indeed, what's the decision of where the water lines went? Was that on the utility managers?
That was on the engineer.
So, did the utility managers have no decisions whatsoever referencing where the water went?
They looked at the line, I mean, they looked at the drawings.
And this is still gonna happen, because these people in South Pittsburgh, this horse on the mountain, they need to have water. So, this is still, is there any grant money left, or we're gonna use our funds?
We use our.
The other thing is, are you done?
Oh, no, I'm sorry.
We've not seen any drawings or anything yet. On either, either line.
I couldn't, I couldn't hear what you said.
We've not seen any drawings on either line yet. I've not seen the drawings.
Oh, drawings on the line, okay.
I sent those drawings to you in a, in a email two, three months ago.
Uh, I don't have such email.
It come in a electronic form.
Yeah, I don't, I don't have, I don't have.
That was sent to you.
I know, you don't have it.
And you're leaning that you're going to is to get T dot to back off, because right now Marion County cannot get a permit for South Pittsburgh's mountain, is that correct? And it's because of the Battle Creek, what's the status on the Battle Creek order?
No, that's what the meeting.
Okay.
Well, we ran into a number of situations with it's now and in the past, and I, I'd like to push something for next agenda, next meeting on the agenda, that we look at and enter, what is it, enter.
Local agreement.
I'm, I'm sorry.
Enter local agreement.
Enter local agreement with anything involving cities or things of this nature so that everything's spelled out and both parties have signed these, uh, agreements. So, we don't, hopefully we don't run into these things again. Am I saying that correctly?
Yes, yes, that's correct.
And I'd like to, I don't, uh, can I make a motion on that tonight if I don't have it, or should I wait till next meeting?
I'll wait till next, to, on the local agreement. Just to, just to make that a sort of standard practice for.
Yes, yes.
But you need to pass something, uh, well, ideally it would be in a resolution form so there'd be.
All right, I'll do it next maybe.
That's right, I'll give you the other.
Okay, yes, thank you.
And then, so I understand what Commissioner Franklin's asking about, is that when there's grant money that comes in for a big infrastructure opportunity?
No, any monies that we spend on the water lines, and there's another city or whatever, that we have to. Because we've done this with, uh, the park board with nine one one with other, and, okay.
And, and we also, if you remember from last week's workshop on the, on the library situation, we talked about also an air governmental agreement, because the statute, it talks about the, the countywide library system actually recommend to do in their local agreement, um, to basically set out the rights and the powers of all parties to, to that library operation. So, it might not be a bad idea if Whitwell, South Pittsburgh are gonna stay involved, if we do that from what we're looking at. Because we're gonna have to, like you all talked about in the workshop, we're gonna have to restructure somewhat the composition of that board, since Jasper's no longer a party, uh, there'll need to be a little change in the representation on that board going forward.
Be a bad idea, I'm, I'm trying to understand, uh, one of the biggest infrastructure, uh, deals we've ever had was it not this last order project from the American Rescue Act? I mean, I know that there was millions and millions of dollars that was afforded to us, and I'm, I'm trying to understand what exactly happened so that we don't run into this issue again. Um, is, is that something that at some point, uh, we can look at what we did right and look at what we did wrong and learn from it and, and not necessarily blame anyone, but just to make sure it doesn't happen again? Um, I don't know what form or how we can do that.
I don't think we have any more characteristics for this, so, anything that makes sense.
Motion to adjourn. Please, we made a motion. Commissioner, Commissioner Abbott, Commissioner Mason, the second, meeting adjourned.